Everybody hear me out there? Do you guys hear us? I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting today is Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. The time is 7:30. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Uh, let's note the role.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Thanks, Joe.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Farrar.
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. Uh, public comment on items not on the agenda. Public comments, come on up. State your name and...
Uh, good evening. My name is Paul Young and I live in Brighton, Michigan. And so you may be wondering, why are you here in, uh, in Oxford? The things that are in common are that they're both in the 8th District. And I'm here to, uh, to share with everyone that I intend to be your next elected representative to the US House of Representatives. As I've been moving through Ingham, Livingston, and the north part of Oakland County, um, there's a great deal of frustration, anger, and frankly disgust with the representation we're having in Washington. They feel that the current representative suggested that she would be bipartisan, nonpartisan, that she would work with the president, and it's become very clear that she has not. Um, I'm a native of Michigan. I've lived, I grew up in Michigan. Uh, I've recently just moved back because I was in Washington DC working in the Trump administration, uh, seeking to secure our borders, seeking to promote jobs in the economy. And if I can earn the support of people in this township and throughout the 8th District, that's what I intend to do in Washington DC as your elected representative of Congress. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Saying none, we'll move on. Uh, next we have with us Senator Rosemary Behr. Please step right up here.
Mr. Supervisor and all the folks here, I appreciate the opportunity to come and visit and say a few words. Uh, thank you all for being here to listen and, and participate. I want to just, just tell you what a delight it is to come back here in a different, different role. I was resident for a long time. So it's, uh, nice to be here to just kind of represent this place that I love so much, actually. So, just to give you a little bit of an update of what's going on in Lansing. My district does actually start up here and go southward. So it goes down through Orion and Oakland Township, Addison Township, Independence, Pontiac, uh, Auburn Hills, Keighley Harbor, Sylvan Lake, and then Beverly Hills, Bingham Farms, Bloomfield Township, and Franklin. So it's kind of a lot of townships. So the lot of townships are pretty important. It's, it's probably a little more than half of my district. So, uh, having lived in, uh, two, two, three of those townships now, um, and now working more intensely in legislation that has to do with townships, I've, I've been learning a lot more about this from both perspectives. And I'm going to continue to work hard to represent the needs of the township here and all the townships throughout District 12. Thank you for that. That's very helpful. Um, you can see all the townships. Most of the area there is, uh, is township. So, uh, the, the, uh, things that we work on impact everybody, but there are things that are specific to townships. Uh, I didn't realize how many rules were different specifically for townships than for cities and towns and villages and even counties. Counties and townships actually have more in common, but there's still differences there. So, um, working with the Michigan Townships Association to identify priorities for this next year or two and looking to you all for input into that as well. What are the issues that are top of concern that we might be able to address legislatively? So, you got, you got somebody there who wants your phone call? Alright, so this year, the things that are, this is gonna be a busy year for us. Um, now we're moving into the second year of this 100th legislature and the second year of this new administration. So things will settle a little bit more. We have a joint resolution in place now that says we will get the budget done by June 1st. Um, hopefully that's true. That is the goal and work has already begun on the new budget. So, just like the last bit, if you have input into budget, if there are specific requests and things that you see are important for the township, this would be a good time to call. And most of my work, most of my committees are budget committees. I'm on the main appropriations committee and I'm on the budget committees for the roads, for education, for the environmental committees. So there's, there's a lot of places where I personally impact, but we all work on things together. So I'm always interested to hear your thoughts.
Fix the damn roads.
Fix the damn roads. That's probably the number one topic that you will hear the most about over the next few months as we figure out, how are we gonna do that? Cause I don't think there's anybody really suggesting that we don't need to. So we're gonna move forward. We're just now starting those conversations on how are we gonna raise the revenue, remove the revenue, or whatever the process turns out to be. It's gonna be interesting, I will say that. Um, we also have to be careful to not de-prioritize education. There's a lot to do there. It's important here in Oxford. The school system is, is great and every single school system, no matter how good they are in Michigan, is not really adequately taken care of these days. So we've got work to do and we're gonna work on that. That's a high priority for me. Um, so the, uh, the other things that are really critical now are taking care of the environment. We have, I, I believe that there's been a lot of attention put on quality of the water and, and worry about, is our water okay? What are the things we need to do? Things are more visible now than they have been. There's no sweeping anything under the rug here. So when we turn stuff up now, you're gonna hear about it. So I think we're hearing about more things than we have. Well, and we know a lot more now than we did in past years. So we know a lot more about what's bad and where it came from and what happens to it in our water. So there's a lot going on. Some of it is very, very good. Some of it we still don't understand. Michigan is clearly the global leader in understanding the, some of these new chemicals that we're finding that we lumped together in a thing called PFAS or permanent chemicals. We have a lot of companies and universities who are doing research on how to get rid of that. We have all kinds of new things happening in filtration to protect our kids and helping families and understand what they need to do. So we are doing really well as a state and that will impact the rest of the planet because it turns out this stuff is showing up everywhere, all the way up to the Arctic Circle where they're finding it in polar bears. So we're, we're a little bit more visible right now because every time we find something, we talk about it. But we're also working on it. So we're nothing, nothing's getting brushed under the rug right now. We're trying to do some support, sorry? Do you have a question? Okay. Some support for the communities, the local governments now because of the changes in rules for, uh, water. Uh, requirements for the lead and copper, for example, that has, where pipes are gonna have to be replaced as needed. Requirements for, we're going to probably have some new recycling support for communities because it's getting harder, uh, for communities to afford recycling the way things have been going lately. The cost, uh, it's not as easy for, for, uh, for recycling centers to deal with the solid waste. So we are building, uh, mechanisms to add support for communities to do that and continue to expand on recycling rather than what some communities are looking at having to shut that down because it's just too expensive. So hopefully we'll be able to hold that together for everybody. It's an important part of our overall environmental picture for the state. So more locally, I will comment on a couple of things because we get, we, um, in my office in that first year, we had 4,000, over 4,400 people, constituents who live in that district, call us for help on something. Different kinds of things, all kinds of things. The things that are most common are things, and, and really anything that we get a lot of calls about, we all, we answer everybody who calls, always. Always, 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 we will help anyone who calls. But when we get a lot of calls on something, like right now, we're getting a lot of calls on guardianship issues, particularly around seniors. Some, some kid ones, but mostly around seniors. And so we are actively working hard on new legislation or changes in current law around guardianship for seniors and to make sure that we protect people and their families. We're also getting a lot of calls in this maybe of, of, uh, something that you all, I'm trying to remember if we've had any in Oxford Township or not yet, but on speed limits on dirt roads. Does this sound familiar to any? Do you guys see this? Yes. So, um, we're, we're actually putting together, we're gonna be part of a little project in the Senate. It's led by Senator Barrett to, uh, research, you know, what are the issues? Once they establish this common speed limit thing, 55 miles an hour on dirt roads is often too much, it turns out. Who would've guessed? Having lived on Ray Road for a long time, I can't imagine going 55 miles an hour down there. So, um, there are issues with that. So we're gonna be part of a project that, uh, to look at that this year and try to identify some practical solutions to that particular issue. Um, we've get, um, probably, uh, maybe more calls about schools and support for schools than anything else. Uh, and, but we all know that that's, that's kind of a pervasive thing around the state these days. And then concerns about auto insurance.
Can I make a comment on schools?
You, you are the boss here.
The thing that really grinds me is all the pressure that's been put on these kids to go to college. They go to college, they get $50,000 to $100,000 in debt when all they had to do, if it was provided, was some education toward being a plumber, being a, all the trades.
Yes.
You know, these tradespeople, my daughter went to college, she's out and she's not making anything that a plumber, electrician, carpenter can make. And everybody complains about lack of people to do the work.
Oh my gosh, I know. You're right, you're right.
Somebody's gotta put some pressure on the schools to come up with some educational things and steer these kids toward the trades.
You will see more. So even in this budget year...
I've had conversations with Senator...
Yeah, yeah. And we have, with, you will see more even in this budget year. There is more money in all the individual school district budgets specifically for technical education. Uh, more countywide product, products, opportunities for local districts, more partnership with other existing trade schools or trade organizations. I personally, um, you know, I went through, I, I know some people in the electrical unions, the IBW, and, and went through a part of their trade school for apprenticeships. And it's astonishingly good. I mean, and with, you immediately are working. You have a real job with good pay and you work with a journeyman. You go to class one day a week and it's free. You get done and you have a journeyman's card. I mean, it's just astonishing. So, yeah, anything that we can do. So you, the governor is, uh, the huge supporter of this. So you will continue to see more. There was more in the budget this current year. There'll be more again next year to continue to move those forward. So if you have projects that would potentially bring that specifically here to Oxford, there'll be support for that in different ways. So, yeah, I appreciate that. That's, that's really great. I'm a, I'm a pretty big fan. Most of my family works in the trades too, so. So the other thing is we're getting a lot of questions about the auto insurance changes and there are, it is a complicated thing that we're gonna be going through this year. Uh, as the new rule's going to affect, it's very different. People will have to actually read the letters they get from their insurance company and look at their choices and the difference in the, the cost and the difference in the coverage and make a decision like you do if you decide you're gonna change your homeowners. You look at the difference and you make a decision. So you, you don't wanna, you don't wanna not pay attention to this. There is still no fault insurance. That hasn't gone away. And one of the choices is to keep your coverage at 100%, unlimited coverage. So we all that are worried about that, there's a lot of people who are worried about losing that unlimited coverage. It is still one of the options. So there will be more information coming out. The, uh, Department of Insurance and Finance is putting up a website. It's already there. There's not too much on it yet, that will have examples of specific families of how much their changes will be if you live in this area and you have four people, two drivers, three cars, you know, whatever the circumstances, to see what to expect in the difference in your cost and insurance and what kind of choices you will be able to choose from. So we will be available. So I'm gonna give you everybody my phone number here in a minute. And so you can always call my office. We are always happy to talk about it. We've had a couple of, uh, oh, three or four, uh, coffee hours in Oxford. We have had the equal number in Lake Orion. Last year, we'll do it again this year. I think we're in Oxford, the Village, um, at the library. I actually always go to the library. The end of February, Lake Orion, a couple of weeks later, something like that. So always on our website. You can see when we're gonna be in town, but you can also just call us anytime and we are happy to help. So the last thing I'll mention, because I know there are people here who are worried about the transit authority and the county, multi-county attempt to do another plan for a, a transit authority. There is, there is a process underway that they would like to do that. There is no plan yet, just so you know that. But I know that there's a lot of concern in the northern part of that, like the top half of this district because the previous generation of this project specifically cut off the northern part of the county is not part of it.
No, no, no. We were part of it. We were part of it.
You had to pay.
We had to pay, but we got no benefit.
Got no benefits, right. Okay. Specifically in a bad place, yeah.
We're not part of it.
Yeah, so the, the, now we, there, there, there is no plan yet, right? I will say this, that we are already in conversation with the folks that are working on this. To, they're actually trying to get permission to make, to start the planning, right? Not, not even to get it on a ballot. It's not even approved to do that. So, but we have already been talking with them about the north part of, not just my district, the north part of the county. And there is no intention to ask people to pay and not get anything back. That's not gonna happen again. Now, what that really means, we don't know yet. So...
It's not just the north part. You've got Highland, White Lake, Waterford, and probably Rochester Hills that are in the same boat.
Yeah, I, I, I think the whole county is being, is part of this conversation. I will say...
So 15 out of the 25 places are not going to get anything.
No, no. That was the last plan. I'm just, all I'm trying to say is that there is no plan yet. And the, in my conversations with the folks in the county, I will tell you that the parts that we're looking at here are part of this plan. Not that there's a plan yet, but they understand that they cannot put forward a plan that asks people to pay who don't get anything back.
That's good.
I would assume that means the whole county. I have to admit, I've really been focused on us. So, I like the other parts of the county too, and I'm sure they're all gonna be included. I will continue to talk with you about this as we go forward. So as often as you would like, we'll give you updates. We have a meeting coming up next week with the plant, the person who's running the project to get the, the started, to get the planning process started. So, it's, they don't even have approval to do anything yet. There is no plan and it's a clean piece of paper. So the bad thing that was there last time is not the same thing we're gonna see. Hopefully what we'll see is something that we actually like. Don't give up before we start. Alright, so that's all that I had prepared to talk about. Do you have questions or other things?
Any questions on the board there?
Yes.
There's a House Bill 5031 that is, uh, proposed to expand polling locations to for-profit facilities. So I sent an email to Representative Kelly, Senator Johnson, yourself, and Representative Riley, and I hope you would support that bill to allow us, we have a very hard time of finding polling locations that are suitable to hold elections in this township.
I definitely will take a look at that. I did, thank you for the, thank you for bringing it up.
So hopefully the vote will come quick because we have...
Most things are nonpartisan, by the way. Most things are.
A lot of times they're in places like schools and it's very disruptive.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and in places that are more rural, there's not as many choices, right? Yeah, I understand. Makes sense. Yeah, well, I'll go look at it for sure. It's obviously not come to the Senate yet, so.
Trustee Nichols.
I again would, um, agree with Clerk Wright. The other thing I wanna mention is the number of, uh, senior citizens that I've talked to in this community are concerned about the cost of medical supplies. Is there anything that's gonna be done at state level to assist?
Um, we are actually working on a bill, uh, that's been over, it's came, it's coming out of the Senate, actually, uh, to allow pharmacies to buy, uh, pharmaceuticals from Canada directly. So that would drop the price pretty dramatically, actually, like up to 10 or 12 times for some things.
That's pretty sad.
It's gonna force change. More states that do this, the whole issue, it'll force change to happen is what will happen. Yeah, yeah. But I don't care. We're, we're willing to take the lead. We don't care. We'll go first.
How soon do you envision this to happen, if it happens?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't have, you know, this is my first time in elected office. So I have one year under my belt. I don't have enough history to be able to guess at that. These kinds of things are sort of complicated. You know, we don't, it's, it sometimes takes longer when it's medical. That being said, I think there's a lot of support for the idea. So I would hope that it would go pretty fast. I just can't even give you a guess. You got my phone number.
I do.
Trustee Nichols, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to Trustee Curtis.
I know Katie Ritter and I have communicated now...
Katie's our chief of staff, yeah?
Yeah, our emails have started going back and forth. We talked about one topic and we're gonna leave that one, but has there been any movement on the certificate of need for this area? I know litigation, but it just, it behooves us to ask, what help can you provide kicking that off that center? The state tells us we have a need. We supply a person that wants to put a hospital here and then the state tells us we don't have a need.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there. We were talking about it earlier. And I won't be able to find out because there's a lawsuit pending, right? So I won't be able to find out about that. That being said, um, there is a, a project that started to start talking about the whole process and the legislation, the rules around it as it is. So it's, it's possible that there are changes that will come out of that work. I don't think this community is the only one that struggles, right, in the rural areas of the state. Most of the state is rural, right? So, and there is a problem with hospitals and hospital services in the, in the outstate part of, of Michigan. So, yeah. I, I think there's a lot of push for some change in that system. So I suspect we'll see some of that this year too.
Thank you.
That's Joe.
On the regional transit issue, is there any way if we must be included in that, is there any way we can get our monies funneled back locally as part of our own local system? We have NOTA right now, provides rights to our people that we pay separate mileage for. I'd like to see if we're, if we're part of the RTA or a part of that process, if some of that money could come back locally to fund that system instead.
It's a great idea. It was one of the suggestions that I put on the table in our first conversation, actually. So they have this great system up there. It's called NOTA. Couldn't we, you know, expand and connect and, you know, all the things that could happen there, so.
Any other board questions? Thank you, Senator Behr.
You are welcome. And I look forward to seeing you again soon. So for everybody else, if you have a pencil, my, our phone number is 517-373-2417. Call anytime. Thank you.
And your cell phone number?
I got it.
I'm teasing.
248?
No, I'm teasing.
Okay.
Teasing. Stop it. My attempt at humor. Uh, first, okay, we're on to item eight. Uh, first reading of zoning ordinance 67A dash point, point 002, section 3.5, light industrial subject to section 5.3. It doesn't seem like much of a change here.
Just adding auto service.
Auto service station?
Stations to...
Any, any question on this?
I move to set a second reading, a possible adoption of an amendment to Article 3, Section 3.5, uh, 0 of the Charter Township of Oxford's zoning ordinance 67A to be considered at the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting, February 12th, 2020, regular meeting.
Second.
Moved and supported. I think Elgin might've snuck that in there. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's try 67A, section 2.2. Let's do it that way.
I move to set a second reading, a possible adoption of amendments to Article 3, Section 2, Article 6, Section 2C, Article 6, Section 2F, the Charter Township of Oxford's zoning ordinance 67A to be considered at the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees, February 12th, 2020, regular meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded by Curtis, Trustee Curtis. Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 133, Wireless Facility Right-Away Management Ordinance Amendment.
I move to set a second reading and possible adoption of the Charter Township of Oxford Wireless Facilities Right-Away Management Ordinance Amendment, Ordinance 133 for the February 12th, 2020, Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Somebody wants to hear a long speech, Gary.
Do you know what the ordinance is?
Yep.
Yeah, it's kinda dissuading, these little boxes to go on every other poll.
Without any control by the government.
Without, without our control. We're being a little proactive on it.
If I have G wireless.
On to the, uh, Fire Department. You got anything, Pete?
Evening, Board and residents. Um, just a couple of updates. Uh, we finished off the year of 2019 on a total of 2,107 calls. And that was up from 2,048 last year. So a total of 59 calls that we were up over last year. Couple interesting things. Uh, everybody's talking about PFAS foam and everything. Um, we had approximately 300 gallons of it that we had. And through the program, through the survey that we started with the state fire marshal, I've been working on it now for over two and a half years. They came out, they called me on Monday morning, the 23rd of December, and said, "We can be out in 15 minutes. Is there somebody at the station?" So I said, "We've got the door open for you." So they came out, they loaded everything up. It took them probably 20 minutes to load everything up and it took them three and a half hours to fill out the paperwork. That's how difficult it was for billings for everything and separate pallets and separate barrels and everything. But they were extremely careful about what everything did. But anyhow, all of ours has been picked up, so we have none in the township now. So that's all gone. Another one, we are very, very close to making an agreement with the Oxford schools. And we should know something within the next day or two of instituting an EMT class in the high school that would be a regular class that we would teach at the Fire Department. And at the end of the year, the student then is eligible to test, the national registry test, to walk out of there with a basic EMT license upon graduation. So we should have that put together hopefully this week.
Question, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Of those 21,07 calls, what was fired to EMS?
I don't have the number with me.
80%?
Yes. Pretty close usually.
It's on Facebook.
Is it on Facebook?
Yeah. On the Fire Department's Facebook page.
It's on the Fire Department and Township's web Facebook, if anybody wants to know the number of calls for each one. Sharp Engineering. You got anything, Jim?
If you're trying to look at the database and if you guys have any questions for that point or or anything else.
Bless you.
Developments.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, unfinished business approval letter to Oakland County Economic Development and Community Affairs. Gary, I'm gonna turn it over to you. This time I do.
Alright. Little background, you might recall the, um, the Brownfield folks have agreed to provide funding to remove lead in the, uh, House Providence property. Uh, it's lead as a result of, um, a hunt club discharge of, um, shotguns. The, um, I had recommended to the board that it not be the applicant. It has to be a governmental body that is the applicant. I'd recommend it not be the applicant because of the liability that accompanies the applicant. You take on responsibilities that you don't wanna take on. The applicant understood that and, um, has gone to the county to be the applicant and in place of the township being the applicant. We received a draft letter. Uh, the county wants a letter and it's understandable because under the, under the policies of the state, the, um, the township would be the first to stand in line to receive, be the applicant for the property. And they had to make the statement that, one, the project was consistent with zoning and consistent with the master land use plan. And, uh, the township was not in a position to do that because although foster care, which is the intended use here, it preempts local zoning, it not, nevertheless, isn't consistent with zoning. It just preempts us. It's a different, different thing. So they went to the county and they provided a letter and it was a letter that we, I had recommended we just couldn't sign because again, it said it had to be consistent with zoning and consistent with planning. The, um, I made changes in that draft letter and I think you have a copy and I'll read it because it's fairly sh... The, I made changes in that draft letter, and I think you have a copy, and I'll read it because it's fairly short. And basically what we're saying is that we have no objections to the county acting as the applicant. We have no basis to object. And the letter says, "This letter is being sent in support of the House of Providence pursuant of a renewed Michigan grant to address historic soil contamination at the Oxford Township facility. The current development complies with-" No, that's the letter they're proposing. You're with me a second here. "The letter is being sent with regard to the House of Providence pursuant to a renewal Michigan grant to address historic soil contamination at Oxford Township facility. The current development is for child caring institution for six or fewer residents that complies with state law. State law preempts applicable local zoning regulations, including zoning regulations of the Oxford Township. The facility is therefore allowed at the House of Providence Oxford location. The grant will help the facility in the expansion of development on a contiguous parcel of land to include a second residential home for undeserved and at-risk youth for whom the House of Providence cares. The township has no objections to the county of Oakland acting as the grant administrator for this effort." And basically that's, that, we say that we simply have no objections. Nothing more is said other than-
We're not taking sides, we're not-
We're not taking a side on this at all, we're just saying, and we have no basis to object to the county acting in that role.
Questions for Gary?
Yes. What kind of liability would we have if the township took this project down?
Well, substantial. You, you actually step in and verify that it's being done correctly. And there's a whole list, I can hear, probably have that right here. I had provided a letter. Maybe I didn't include it in my book here. You're responsible for for hiring a consultant to oversee the project plans and operation. And I advised that if something went wrong, and if the contract with the consultant so provided, the township could, that's on a different paragraph, I apologize. Well essentially, I, it was a wrong letter. Essentially, you stand, you, you stand as the applicant, basically directing the project. Now, the, the owner of the property would hire their own consultant that would be responsible for the cleanup. But you in turn would hire, have to hire your consultant that would oversee this and basically verify that the work was being done correctly. So you take on the responsibility that if it wasn't done correctly, you would, you would have that liability exposure.
And the expenses, well?
Yeah, there, there is, it, it factors in, there is reimbursement from the Brownfield funding to be reimbursed for those expenses, so I don't think the expenses would be an issue.
Gary, you've also got a sample motion on this. We've incurred, as you know, quite a bit of attorney fees on this.
Correct.
Do we put that as a condition of approval, that HOP pays back the township for the attorney fees?
Yes. Attorney for House Providence is here, Mr. Rassell. And I have talked with Mr. Rassell, I advised him that we've gone through the invoices and have pulled out what we don't think they should be responsible for, because obviously there's a lot of stuff we just do, it's township work on that. And advised what we think it's, they were responsible for. And that sum is about ninety-six hundred dollars that they should be responsible for. I've told him he has, that likely he would approve this conditioned upon payment of the professional fees, and that he would have the right to, of course, review all the professional fees and have his input if he thought that those kind of numbers, that particular item didn't belong to the applicant. And he understands that.
He was okay with that?
So far as I know, at least, at least it was five months ago.
Any other questions?
I move to authorize supervisor William Dunn to sign the letter in regard Oakland County acting as a grant administrator in regard to soil contamination of property located in Oxford Township. For a copy of the letter to the Oakland County Economic Development Community Affairs, and also have House of Providence pay any applicable township attorney fees relating to this matter as a condition of this letter.
Removed.
Support.
Supported by Margie this time. Now, we'll open it up for discussion. Kelly?
Hi there, Kelly Myers, Delano Road in Oxford. I guess my first question is, why would you incur fees without having a funding mechanism? I mean, normally doesn't the township do a T and A account before they open their attorney, open access up to individuals? And I know I can't call the township attorney and incur ninety-six hundred dollars in legal fees without prepaying the township. And to me, as a citizen, when I'm hearing that you'll sign the letter to get your money back, it doesn't sound right. That's just my observation there. In terms of the letter, I know the original letter was written by House of Providence, and then there was iterations down between the attorney, which is, would obviously incur that expense. But the wording of the letter, I think, should be straightforward and accurate. There's wording in there that just doesn't seem like it belongs. And there's quite a few typos in the letter. You know, there's comma, period, there's a space where the period should be. There's no period between these two, so I think if you're gonna send it, you need to clean it up. Ben, there's wording on here where it says it's a second residence for underserved and at-risk youth. That's not what the license says. So maybe you should just stick to the license. And what the license, you know, says is, you know, it's, it's a home for institutionalized foster children. That would be the appropriate wording in there. Otherwise, I guess maybe you need to explain what underserved and at-risk youth is, because that's, that's not what the license is for this. I think you just need to be accurate, if it's the government providing this. The township attorney raised a good point, that the use is not consistent with the planning and the zoning. As a resident, I do really appreciate my zoning being upheld. And I think this letter should be straightforward and accurate, and it should state that institutional use is not consistent with the master plan or our zoning. Is there a problem with adding that to the letter? Because the grant requires that it is, and you're saying, yes, you can act as the, the grant administrator, but shouldn't they know going in that one of the elements is already being addressed? I mean, it seems to me, it should be added that this institutional use is not consistent with planning, with the master plan or the zoning. The part in there about the preemption is fine, that's an accurate statement, so I would have, you know, no issue with that. I'm just saying I think the letter should be typographically correct.
Having it precluded by state law?
Right, that part is correct. The statement in there is correct, that we can't enforce our zoning. But also the two statements that our zoning, you know, doesn't allow institutional use, and it doesn't comply with our master plan, those are also accurate statements. And so to be balanced, I think they all should be in there. So that the county who's considering being the administrator for the grant knows all of this going in, because the grant does require that the local community and the surrounding community gets that input. So let's just be accurate now, that's, you know, that's what I'm saying. You know, in terms of the funding and why that's being used, that's a bigger issue because now we know, even Rosemary Baer, Senator Baer, said there's so many things out there with PFAS and the Green goo and, you know, all these things that need to be cleaned up. We really need to be careful in how we're spending our limited budget on cleanup funds. You know, so that's an issue with the county. But, you know, in terms of the letter, I am just requesting that you add in there the accurate statement about it not complying with the master plan and the zoning, and that you just correct some of the typographical errors, and you change and remove the wording underserved and at-risk use for whom the House Providence cares, and just put a second resident home for institutionalized foster children, which is what it would be for. So if you would do that, I think it would be accurate. Thank you.
Debbie, thank you, Kelly. Gary, you have any questions on that, or?
No, I mean, I don't disagree with anything she's said. What I was attempting to do is thread the needle between what they wanted and what we could-
What they would accept.
We could accept, what we could accomplish without committing the township that this is something that's approved. It's simply preempted, and therefore we have no objections. Yeah, I, I don't disagree with, with Kelly that some of the language that talks about the underserved and at-risk youth is language that came from their letter, and I'm just, again, trying to thread the needle that, that would be something that would be acceptable to them.
So you're acceptable to her changes and the punctuation?
I am, whether, whether the applicant's agreeable to that, I don't know.
Gary, that letter's been approved.
I'm gonna have, sir, sir, I'm gonna have you- I'm gonna have you come up here, thank you. State your name, please.
Richard Rassell, three eighty North Old Woodward in Birmingham. The letter that you're being presented tonight, that was drafted meticulously by Oakland County, by Environmental Council for House of Providence, and then edited by the Township Council, Mr. Rentschop, has been presented to Mr. Hanson and Mr. Gow with Oakland County as the form, and they've proved it as an exception to their normal practice. This letter has to be signed in the exact form that it's being presented to you this evening, or this risk, or this grant is at serious risk. And I've informed the township done this on many occasions, including your council. The form of this letter is accurate, the form of this letter is, in our view, nondiscretionary. This, this form of this letter puts Oxford Township in a position of no risk, no liability, and has removed this township as the grant administrator in place Oakland County. The form of this letter, if it's varied even a little bit, this grant is subject to being gone, which would be a very serious problem. We're looking at a free cleanup. The parsing words about what the use is has been at play for over three months, and we're asking you to sign the letter as presented, so that we can get it presented, and the, the grant will be provided by the state of Michigan and administered by Oakland County. Thank you.
Gary?
Well, again, I have no, I recommended the letter, I have no problem with the letter, but that doesn't mean I don't disagree that there are some words in there that aren't necessary from, from their point of view, but it isn't necessary apparently from Mr. Rassell's client's point of view. I have no problem with this letter, when you read it says it's preemptuses, preempts local zoning. We have no difficulty with the county acting as the applicant in this letter. So I have no problem with the letter.
Ball for the vote? Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Quick Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Our Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Uh, trustee Payne?
Yes.
And trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Move on. Board, uh, policy on the sale of public-owned property. Or, yes, public-owned property, we'll get to that.
From William Dunn?
I'm gonna turn this over to you and Jack. You and Jack were the ones that hammered this out with me watching.
Yeah, board members, all three of us met. As you know, we've got a couple properties that could possibly be, be available for sale. And this year we have a resolution here that kinda squares everything away in terms of how we're gonna handle that in the future. So I, I thought Gary did a really good job with this of summarizing the committee's work on it.
I move to approve the township board procedure for the sale of the township property as presented, and to attach a copy as an appendix to the meeting minutes.
Separate.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? Yes.
Well, will the form, form be moved down for the, for one page, it shows, uh, sale by bid? We can move that down, correct? Whoever has the-
We can move it, we can move it around.
Yeah. My, my other question is the optional RFP notice to budding property owners, which is B, item, item six. Would that be sort of like a preferential treatment to those that are touching the property, as opposed to somebody who may want to purchase it that doesn't touch the property? This is kind of playing, uh, when, when properties goes up for tax sale and the, the adjacent owner, we give them the opportunity to purchase to combine with it, which makes sense for this.
You're allowed for that option.
They would compete just the same as anyone, it's just that they might have a particular interest to be involved, and they would hate to have them come in and say, "Gosh, if we'd known about this, well, it was in the paper." Well, we didn't get the paper. So you're just letting them know, look, the property next door is gonna, is up for sale, and, just a notice, just a notice.
So if it is optional, is that something that the board would, would approve to allow that to happen?
Correct.
Wouldn't, wouldn't just be an administrative-
Correct, yes, yeah, right, right Curtis.
Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On to new business, Beaumont Hospital, Gary, you get up here. Uh, approval, approval plan unit development subject to conditions, that's, that's not quite true. Would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, the, I passed out a resolution that I received as I was walking out the door this evening, from legal counsel for Beaumont. And it, the, the, a couple of items which the board needs to address, and backing up here. What, what has, what, what happened was there, the Beaumont Hospital made a presentation to the planning commission, and they included a lot of information and talked about the building being seven stories and that the signage would be X-wide. And when the planning commission dealt with it, they didn't deal with any of the specifics, which is not improper. The, and so they simply said, "We approve the preliminary PUD," period. Well, when it came to the board, or within the process coming to the board, the, the hospital said, gee whiz, we'd like to have this thing called, about the height of the building and the signage dealt with, and the period of time that the, that the PUD would be open, allowing them to commence construction over a long period of time. So backing into this, what happened is, they want, they, they just simply are now saying, look, we want the planning commission to consider the maximum height of seven stories, which is fine, they can consider that. Increasing the signage square footage, and they've taken out the, the amount, which was always been an issue before with the planning commission, just said, and consideration other signage relating as set forth in the applicant's preliminary PUD, and they're just considering it. And thirdly, they've asked for ten years to have the PUD be open. Then the last item in the very last line, it says that they, that in addition to the PUD, that they are approved for, they would be approved for the permitted uses of C-two zoning districts. Now, the way your, your PUD ordinance works typically is that the planning commission simply approves the preliminary PUD, sends it off to the board, and then they come in with a specific site plans at the, as you, they go through the final PUD process. So things like building height, signage, would all be dealt with post preliminary PUD. They, they need this for a comfort, and they haven't closed on the property, and they, they want to be sure that the, the minimum issues are dealt with so that they can feel comfortable that this project's going forward. So I think that consideration, I, I had left the amount of term that the PUD be open, I left a blank. I think that it's your opinion, it's your call, but this is two-phase project, as you know. And if you're comfortable with that land having no activity on it for a period of up to ten years, that's your call. If you think at least maybe phase one should be dealt with in a shorter period of time, and by the way, right now your ordinance says within one year after the approval of PUD. So this is going from one year to ten years. But anyway, I think you could simply refer this back to the planning commission. I would make these suggested changes in paragraph three, or item three, where it says granting a waiver of requirements that a final PUD plan be submitted within twelve months of board approval. And I, I suggest granting a waiver for phase one and/or two. So that lets the planning commission say, yeah, well, we'll allow you for two, to defer the, the, keep the PUD open on the second, phase two, for up to ten years, or they can say, no, we're comfortable with one and two. In any event, it's still gotta come back to you folks, okay? So, and then the other item, I would delete, that the, the last paragraph, I would delete that the addition to all uses permitted in the C-two zoning district, because that's not what your ordinance says. Your ordinance says they get PUD zoning, and by the way, you've, you've approved that to try to give them some comfort, which is completely out of lockstep with what your ordinance provides, but I'm okay with that.
It's a PUD.
Yeah. And, but they're not, they may not be allowed to have all uses of a C-two district because what the PUD approves is what the PUD approves, and it might not approve all uses of a C-two district. You can't have, basically, this would be saying you have the rights of two districts, both PUD district and a C-two district. both PUD district and a C2 district.
Can I make a comment, Gary?
Sure.
I appoint these Planning Commission members to do this work. And I feel like if this board sits here and tells them what to do, it's not right. I would, I'd send this whole thing back to the Planning Commission, and let them discuss it, whether it's two years, five years, seven years. I don't wanna step on their toes. They've got a job to do, that's what they're there for, and I think we should let them do it.
I'll make a motion to send the proposed resolution regarding the preliminary PUD site plan on Beaumont Medical Campus, the original document, and the suggested attorney changes back to the Oxford Township Planning Commission for its consideration and decision.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions?
Yes. So, so we're not approving this resolution? We're sending the resolution back to the Planning Commission?
Well, we're approving the resolution, but what we're doing is, we're, we're not, we're not suggesting that it be for ten years, would be the number one item. This, the signage, we're suggesting they discuss the signage, which is fine. And, uh, we're suggesting, I'm suggesting, is you not include C2 as a permitted use.
I would like to suggest that they nail down the signage a little bit. I don't want them to have four hundred square feet, a thousand square foot signage.
Apparently, it's twenty-five hundred square feet.
But you know what I'm saying? I don't, I'd like to settle that or get someone.
The Planning Commission's the right place to be, to have that discussion, yeah.
But I don't like to leave that open-ended.
It's going right to them.
So what is this motion?
Yeah, exactly.
Goes back to the Planning Commission.
We're not approving anything other than sending it back.
Until the commission takes it.
Didn't you say we're approving this resolution, Gary?
Well, I think you ought to approve it with the understanding that the Planning Commission, you're asking the Planning Commission to address one through three, but without locking them into any decision on one through three. You're saying, "We'd like some more information on items one through three, but not locking them in any."
I'd like that part of the motion. To make it perfectly clear.
Yeah.
I want this all going back to the Planning Commission.
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving this resolution.
I would agree with.
More work needs to be done.
Well, then, um.
I agree with sending it back to the Planning Commission, give us a clean thing to look at, and.
I'm sure it'll get back that we're, we're not happy with, uh, certain things. So, the motion is to send it back to the Planning Commission. That's Treasurer Ferrari's motion. With, with nothing else, send it back, yes.
With, with no action by this board and nothing has happened.
Correct.
I'd like to see.
Well, no, we're, we're sending it back.
The motion is to send this back for the Planning Commission to recommend back to the Township Board. And, and there'll be a final PUD coming before this board, correct?
Yeah, that, that's, that's, very, have a very detailed site plan requirement that, that would come before them. Their, their objection was that we, they didn't wanna spend a ton of money on design site plan issues, uh, 'cause it's a big, big operation. If they didn't know they weren't gonna have the hospital, and, and have the basics of it, knowing they could have at least seven stories, and, and sufficient signage, and have it open for a period of ten years. So, I, I think it'd be wise to have, you could say, with a focus on items one through three, not that they're be bound by one through three, but that they have a focus, these are areas you're looking for direction on.
Well, Jack's here to give them direction.
Yeah, but I'm still confused now, listening to Gary and listening to Curtis and listening to Joe. We're not approving the PUD to have the hospital zoning tonight, correct?
Going back to the Planning Commission.
Correct? Correct. Bill?
I guess, correct.
We are not allowing them, um, the ten years. And the Planning Commission would have worked on the, uh, story and the square foot of the signs. So, we have two of the components, but we're not gonna do any of that. We're gonna send the entire thing back to the Planning Commission.
Could I recommend? I mean, when, when we started this, the notion was that we would grant PUD zoning, and that was my original, my original resolution, which has gone a long way away. Their, the resolution they proposed, you haven't even, you don't have that in it. You don't have the, the proposed that the PUD zoning would be granted. It's putting the cart before the horse, but that's what they needed from a security standpoint. I had no problem with it, because the approval was for a PUD zoning was approved, subject to conditions, and the conditions would be resolution of all these other issues.
Yes. Yeah, one of, one of the unfortunate points, from my point of view, is this information was just put upon this board tonight. We really haven't had a chance to study it. So, so hopefully, this motion, as I understand it, is we're not acting on anything. I'm probably repeating myself. This is all going back to the Planning Commission, basically, starting over, bringing it back to us for preliminary PUD approval, then going back to the Planning Commission to deliberate for a final PUD to recommend to the Township Board for the final approval.
Right, but I, I, I think you might want to say that you are, you are okay with PUD zoning, subject to the conditions of the requirements of the PUD ordinance.
Can we make a motion, just send these three bullet points back to the Planning Commission?
You can do that.
Address.
Give a motion on the floor.
I'm just asking a question. So when I make, say, no.
So we could, we can just send the three items back?
Yes, that's what I'm kinda.
What would you approve, then, William?
I would, I would not approve this motion as it is right now.
Okay.
So we're gonna find out if it's good or not.
And then make a new motion?
Maybe, maybe if somebody.
Of PUD, but send these three items back to the Planning Commission.
So a no vote?
All right.
With Joe, with, yes, the questions, yes.
I, I just would, uh, I'll put Kelly on the spot. Are you able to rephrase the motion, Kelly?
Uh, no, I cannot.
Joe, could you rephrase it?
Yeah, it's basically to send the whole resolution back to the Planning Commission. As a form, have them work out all the details, and then come back to the Township Board for its consideration.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Opposed.
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 Okay, would there be a new motion?
Could I, could I suggest one? Sure.
Yes.
That the, that the board grants PUD rezoning, subject to the conditions of the requirements of the PUD ordinance, and that the matter be referred back to the Planning Commission to address the specific points of one through three.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Everybody understand?
Yes.
I do.
We're agreeing to enter into a PUD rezoning to hospital use in C2. The other items will be addressed by the Planning Commission.
All items, yes.
Three items.
Yeah.
And this, um, I'm sorry. This, this motion was approved by the Planning Commission to get it for a preliminary PUD, correct?
Yes.
So, so there's no issue with the preliminary PUD at this point?
Correct.
It would be, this would basically be an amendment if they wanted to come through and talk about specifics. But what didn't happen, and again, we're backing way up, and it got lost even in this resolution they sent us, is, is that they were looking for PUD zoning. And I drafted a motion, said you could do PUD zoning, because the board has the flex to do that. And, and, but, but this PUD zoning was conditioned upon compliance with all the requirements of the PUD ordinance. So basically, you're, you're not giving them anything, other than kinda like, "We're okay with it, but if you don't make those conditions, you don't get it."
Yes, this one, might, might be a silly question, but if the, if the P, if there's a portion of the PUD that's turned down, can they go to the ZBA for any approvals?
No, no. There's no, that's not a remedy under PUD.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
This motion.
Can I oppose? No, I'm just kidding.
We're sending it back to have them answer these three questions.
Yeah.
But the preliminary PUD is approved.
Yes. Is that all for you tonight, Gary?
The AT&amp;T thing.
Oh, you got the AT&amp;T, never mind. That's next, AT&amp;T.
Yeah, the, what I've done, and Curtis put some sheets up on the screen here.
Let me get to those, Gary.
Okay, three here. And if you're, as we go through this, if you're more comfortable deferring this to your next board meeting, there is not a rush on this as such, uh, but, um.
Just tell me what, what screens you need, Gary.
Yeah, that's, just back up on that, the, during the survey, okay? There are two areas, a little bit, there we go. The new lease area is, and the little finger that comes down is apparently not a lease area, but the new lease area is, is twenty by thirty. And that just is for their equipment, because Verizon would not allow them on. Go ahead, for the next. And by the way, I've talked with Ron Davis about this, and he's, he's okay with, with this. The yellow portion is, are the changes. You previously proved the Verizon lease, and all the yellow does is identify what's different in the AT&amp;T lease from the Verizon lease. And there's not a lot of substance. The first part is, obviously, it's a, it's now with new wireless singular. The, um, the second paragraph, uh, which is new, just acknowledges, one of the things we, Verizon had to prove all of this, we couldn't just approve it on our own. So this paragraph says Verizon, they acknowledge they have to get the approval of Verizon on this lease. Glad you're. The, um, this is the twenty by thirty portion that they are leasing, and it's identified on Exhibit B. Next, go ahead. License or, and Verizon licensing under this agreement consents to the routing of such additional right-of-way, okay? Which is again, the, the, they will be paying you nine thousand dollars annually. Originally, this is an equal monthly installment, so final document, which you have, does not have that. Uh, Joe pointed out a good point. We don't wanna see, get this on a monthly basis, want it on an annual basis. It is payable in advance, um, so, for, and the lease term, again, was wrong in the draft here. It says first day of June, two thousand nineteen. And the reason these are wrong, 'cause this stuff has all happened within the last twenty-four hours. So when I sent this stuff out to Curtis, I had, was working from a different draft, but I can, at least a point for discussion. The lease would start June one, two thousand twenty.
Should we just table this to come back in fact?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I just wanted to let you know what, what's happened here. And, um, the, uh, they paid in advance three thousand dollars towards your legal costs, and I know we've exceeded it, but that's the way it is. And incidentally, they also paid ten thousand dollars to cover prior work of a, uh, independent who was coming in on behalf of AT&amp;T and used a lot of our time up, and we ran up a bill of ten thousand, they paid that.
Generally through the Plan, Plan, not the Planning Commission, the, the person, Parks and Rec.
Right, right, and they paid that ten thousand, so they've been upfront, I think. Okay, anything further on that one? Yeah, um, you get approval of, approval of Verizon? Keep going. Now, okay, that's good. And the right of first refusal, they have no right of first refusal. That's on the other issue. And then, uh, talking with Curtis, he would like on page three, it talks about a five percent increase, annual increase, and he would like to have a chart prepared to show that, so you can just look. Okay, this is two thousand twenty-two, good idea. We'll put in a chart. And, um, the, Curtis, you had a question on paragraph twenty-one. That's the notice paragraph, and it is in the, it is in the lease.
Is it?
Yep, yeah, I'll point out.
Not, not number twenty-one, just paragraph twenty-one?
Probably, not, 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 yeah, yeah, it's in the final document, twenty-one. So, I think it's appropriate to table it. Let's get a clean, this all cleaned up for you, for what you needed, and get the graph in there, the chart in there, and you'll be, at least you understand what's going on. Not a lot of change from what you previously proved, that's why I didn't wanna belabor you with all the line-by-line stuff.
I'd like to make a motion to table the AT&amp;T colocation at twenty-seven ninety-five.
Don't go anywhere, Gary.
License agreement.
Gary? Sorry.
The February twelfth, two thousand twenty board meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gary, can I do a do-over?
No.
I'm gonna do it, 'cause I'm running the meeting. When this, when this goes back to the Planning Commission, I'm talking about the Beaumont. Should they do findings of facts on everything they do?
Yeah, I'll try to get with Don.
So I mean, to make, make things a little clearer.
Bill, we discussed that, Mike and I, and part of the reason was the finding of facts weren't presented, and of, of all those other issues, and that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was going to be.
Yeah, there's criteria in the preliminary PUD approval process, which you should, they're somewhat subjective, but they should be dealt with, yes, the finding of fact.
Okay, thanks, Gary. I think you're through now.
No, there's one more. The professional fee resolution?
Yeah, we're talking about fees that weren't paid, and we had to go back and get them. This is going.
This is, we kind of always had an agreement internally.
This is gonna kinda answer that.
This here kinda solves that problem.
Well, this, I think this does, this is helpful, and, uh, what, what it says, and here's, here's been the problem. In the case of, um, House of Providence, we didn't set up an escrow account, so we really screwed that one up. Uh, but what happens on almost every one of these sayings is they come before you, and you approve it, and then there's outstanding bills that haven't been paid. Well, now you have no leverage to collect those bills. So what this says is, all your approvals are gonna be conditional, and by the way, and our bills lag behind, okay? I mean, they're, they'll be thirty days behind, so there's money that's laying out there that they're collecting. So what this says is, we'll approve, we'll do our approvals. First approval is a conditional approval. The conditional approval is the satisfaction of the payment of professional fees. And what happens is, they are given, they are given the fees that have been billed to the township, uh, that they need to reimburse the township for. And then they will be given an amount from our office, which hasn't yet been billed, but just a dollar number, here's what it is. And then we will turn around and get a detailed bill out. And when they get it, when that, they get that number, they can, they can challenge that number, okay? They can pay it, let's say the bill is nine thousand dollars, and they take a look at the detail of that later on, say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, we shouldn't have paid for that." They can bring that before the board and say, "We shouldn't have to pay for that." So this is gonna tighten the ship up, I think, substantially.
You know, this thing doesn't happen a lot. Ninety-five percent of the time, everything goes smooth, but this is going to stop those couple instances that we've gotten in a problem.
Yeah, yeah, it, 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 there's mechanics involved in all of this, and that's the problem, so, yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the notice to the applicant for township approval, would it, would it be beneficial that that would be in a, like a statement form, that they would acknowledge they've received and understand?
It'd be fine, yeah.
That they would sign off on this, instead of just being handed.
You didn't tell me about it.
You'd have, you'd have proof that they've read it, they've signed it.
Yeah, you could have, we could put a line at the bottom that says, "Received."
That's a good point.
The applicant, yeah. Yeah, the, the, the document requires that this policy we're talking about here be provided to the applicant upon his submittal of the application, he or she's submittal app.
Or his first contact with us.
Right.
Exactly.
And that we have a line where they can, they sign it and everything.
Right, mm-hmm.
I move to approve the resolution regarding escrow payment assurance, with the change of adding a, a signature line, that the applicant has received the document, and for this to be effective immediately.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
No, I think I'm done. Am I excused?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
And Gary, that last, that last one, you're gonna, Gary, the last one, you're gonna send a clean copy then? Yeah. The signature line and yet.
Okay, we're moving on to relocation of voting precincts, two and seven.
Yes, board members, I just lost the overhead, but, um, what's happened is, in your packet, you'll see a letter from Oxford Schools requesting the precincts that we've had in there to be relocated. And I've made arrangements with Cooperation of the Village of Oxford and Oxford Public Library to move those two precincts out. So, any, uh, future elections at this point will be held at the Oxford Community Center, Community Room, excuse me, for Precinct Two. And the Precinct Seven will be held at the Oxford Public Library. Also, because it's been pretty difficult to find locations, I would like to see if the board would entertain the possibility of, of finishing the under, downstairs here, underneath where we're sitting as we speak, that I could open up that as a possible absentee voting counting board, and potentially have a future, uh, voting precinct right in this location here. So, Supervisor Dunn has, uh.
We got together with the building official today, and got some kind of an estimate. Nothing fancy downstairs, it's already, uh, we've got P-gravel on the floor. Everything's pretty much there to put down four inches of concrete.
Everything's pretty much there to put down four inches of concrete, uh, and just make it, uh, for basic storage and use for counting absentee ballots. The approximate price would be under $20,000 and it's just something for the board to consider. And if you say to go ahead, I can, uh, go out for bids, or we can go out for bids to see what it would take to do downstairs, uh, to whatever Curtis needs.
How many square feet?
2,500.
Okay.
It's a, it's the same size as we're sitting on right here. So it's quite a, quite a large piece of concrete we're going to put in.
That, that would, that would be the goal, to bring it back in the February board meeting and give you some estimate cost and vote yes or no?
We just don't want to go and do all the work and go, we didn't want to do this. So it's, do you, would you consider us doing this?
Absolutely.
Yes.
You got a lot of yeses?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to approve the relocation of election polling precinct two from Oxford Elementary School to the Village of Oxford Community Room and approve the relocation of election polling precinct seven from Oxford Elementary School to the Oxford Public Library to be effective for March 10th, 2020 presidential primary election and all future elections at these locations until further notice.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Come on up.
We're getting moved to the village, uh, facility, right? The precinct two is getting moved to the village offices?
Correct, yeah.
Are they having their elections there at the same time?
Are they having their elections there?
Right, is that their precinct for their-
Not for the presidential primary.
So the village doesn't vote?
They will vote for the presidential primary.
But, yeah, they have their own precinct, but don't they vote there?
There's candidates on the ballot for the village.
But still, they're going to be voting-
At the same place at the same time?
At the same place.
We had, we had the, the election at the community center in 2016.
Not with precinct two?
Not with precinct two, but we had precinct one there for the village.
Right, precinct one, village votes there, but now precinct two and one are voting there?
No.
So where is-
One is at Oxford United Methodist Church.
You're speaking too quick for me.
Precinct one is at Oxford Free Ma, or United Methodist Church, it's on Berdick Street.
But they no longer vote in the village, the village no longer votes in the village? They, they, or-
The church is in the village, yeah, the church is in the village.
Just not at the village complex? Okay, so there won't be any other voting precinct going on there?
No, it's relatively small now. It's, it's very tight.
Okay, because there was concern with parking if the village residents were doing there too, a bunch of people had asked me that.
No parking is the problem.
Yeah, parking there isn't always, uh, isn't good. All right, thanks.
That's why I encourage absentee voting.
Yes.
Um, let me flip this over. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? Board trustees comment, starting with trustee Nichols.
I have nothing.
Trustee Dur.
Nothing.
Curtis Wright.
Uh, nothing tonight, I already said my piece.
I have nothing.
I don't have anything.
Margie?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Jack?
Well, two things, um, I got to remember the guy's name. We got a call on December 21st at 8:30 at night and it wasn't a water sewer meeting, but it was a resident that was not on our grinder pump replacement. Joe got a phone call, Bill got a text, Bill called me about 8:30 on Saturday night and we resolved the gentleman's grinder pump and I know he's very happy over that and we'll, we'll work on getting him on the maintenance program at the next water sewer committee. Secondly, no VOCs were found in all our test wells. So that's a key important point, I know it was on the, the website and the Facebook page, the social media, uh-
And that also, that also includes the village.
Compounds, that does include the village.
Includes the village, there's nothing there either.
All test wells have been, uh, non-detective any VOCs. Other than that, that's what I have, thank you.
Your motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?